And the pledge. You guys ready? You ready, Cal?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Two point zero three adoption of the agenda. It's recommended that the agenda for November the fifth, twenty twenty five, regular meeting of the Board of School Trustees be adopted as presented. So moved second. So moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Three is recognition. Three point zero one, Emmons Elementary School presentation. Mr. Addison.
Set this up for me. Thank you, President Parks, Dr. Stevens, members of board. I want to thank you for joining us here at Emmons tonight. We're excited to have you guys in our building and be able to demonstrate some things and show off some of our good things that we're doing here at school. You just got to see our grounds crew come up here and lead us in the pledge. We're going to bring them back up with Mr. Bach, and they're going to explain what our grounds crew is. It's one of our after-school clubs and what they do around here. So I'm gonna welcome Mr. Bach and our grounds crew back up to the microphone because they're gonna get to start us off tonight.
First off, I want to say thank you for having us. This program has been designed to help students build leadership skills and take pride in their school by helping to keep the school clean, looking beautiful, and creating a safe learning environment. Students get really excited about meeting on Thursdays. We meet every Thursday from three o'clock till four o'clock. And I hear a lot of times, oh, it's ground crew day. So they're really excited about that. So it's kind of cool. We had a lot of fun. We got our cool shirts on tonight. And the kids are gonna talk about some of the things they like to do and why they're in grounds crew. Anybody want to go first? Kate, come on, Cal. Don't be afraid.
I'm not. Okay. I started grounds crew because I wanted to keep the school clean. It's a really fun after-school activity that we should really all be a part of. And I feel good each and every day for helping make the school cleaner and better.
Good job, buddy.
I started grounds crew because I wanted to also help keep the school clean. And I wanted to help pick out trash outside mainly and also help with the gardening stuff. And what I like about grounds crew is that it allows us to choose what we want to clean. I also like the work outside that we do in the warmer climates.
I think they're a little shy right now, but some of the things that we do is in the spring and in the fall, we go outside and we clean up. We pull weeds, we plant flowers, we walk the whole grounds and pick up trash. I mean, these kids go crazy over picking up trash. It's amazing to me. I mean, they do a great job, and it really makes our building look a lot better. So I'm very proud of them for that. In the winter, we're inside, obviously because of the weather, and we're doing anything from, we're gonna be scraping black marks off the gym floor here. We do trash, we help with the trash around the building. We do things like dusting, and we do windows, all the entryways. So we clean all the entryways. And like I said, they just do a phenomenal job, and I can't say enough good things about this group. And like I said, the excitement makes me happy to be able to be part of it. So, thank you. I'm sorry, we have one more that would like to speak.
I joined grounds crew because I wanted to make my school a better and cleaner place for everyone to enjoy. And I like to clean my school and make it better for everyone.
I started grounds crew because I wanted to clean up after people when they didn't clean up after themselves. I wanted to start grounds crew because I wanted to clean up after people when they didn't. And I like grounds crew because I get to spend more time with my friends after school, and I get to clean up, and it's super fun.
The reason why I signed up, because it looked fun and I like cleaning. The thing I like about grounds crew, cleaning, picking up sass, me and my friend can clean together wiping.
The reason why I started cleaning grounds crews, because I wanted to do what was right and clean the school. What I like about grounds crew, I really like dusting and wiping off the shelves.
The reason I joined grounds crew is so I could be a leader for my school. And what I like about grounds crew is that we can pick up the school and do what other people didn't do that they were supposed to.
I joined grounds crew so I could make my school a safer environment and a cleaner environment.
And now I think we're officially finished, so I apologize.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bach, and thank you to all of our members of our ground crew. You only got to see about a third of our grounds crew actually here tonight. There's about thirty students, give or take, on every Thursday, and they are throughout the building doing tons of different little service projects. It's just another layer of leadership within the building that they get to do and help keep our school clean and just show some pride in the school. But we certainly appreciate all their work, and we certainly appreciate Mr. Bach leading that group. And we also have one of our other staff members that helps out. Colleen Houghton also helps out every week with it as well. Her son's involved. But again, just a great, great group and a great time for our kids to show some pride in the school and be involved. So as we move through, I'm gonna try and use our clicker tonight and get, I'm not quite sure. Well, we got it, okay. We clicked through pretty quickly on that. But just some other little things. We've got our grounds crew, all the kids that are involved, we put them up there. And then a quick picture was, I believe, the next one in our thing. All right, are you running or am I? Okay. Okay. I think you're gonna, or did I do that? Okay, you got it, thank you. So let him run it for tonight, then. Some other little things that we do, we just highlight some of other opportunities that our students get to do here at Emmons. And you know, the fact that we try and build leadership in a bunch of different capacities for kids because leadership is a universal skill for all kids. But obviously, they need it in different ways because not all kids are the same. Obviously, they're unique, and we need to provide a variety of leadership opportunities for them. So again, our leader and me, we have lots of student jobs that they do. Every morning, if you come in and join Emmons crew, you're gonna hear them at the announcements every day. Sometimes we have to go back and we have to re-explain a few things, but that's okay. But they do a wonderful job with announcements, they help out with all of our data tracking, they have their own individual data binders. You know, robotics is an awesome one where you get lots of kids involved in that after school. They get to be leaders within that robotics group. One of the great things for us recently, we've had three students that come back from John Young and mentor our robotics kids on a weekly basis. They're coming in two to three times a week to help out with our current kids, even though they're doing their thing at John Young, and they come back and help out. The connections are huge. We also, they help us out with our wig boards every week. We have our attendance and our i-ready minutes that are our school goals that we're tracking, which you'll see outside as you walk out of the gym there on our bulletin boards. But just a lot of opportunities for our kids to get involved and show their leadership skills and build them. At this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Lewinsky, who's gonna talk about our building culture.
All right. One thing that I wanted to talk about that I am very proud of is our culture up here. How do you build a, how do you create a positive culture? If you look at a lot of these words on the board, really none of them have to do with academics.
All schools, we're all going to work hard in academics. All seven elementary schools do a great job. But one thing that we found here at Emmons that has helped us with a positive environment is working on our culture. And that is community partnerships. That is having lunch outside, fun fairs, we have a multicultural night, showing up for one another, supporting. It's the people in this building. It's that group back there, our teachers, our PAs, our LAs, our custodians, our lunch ladies, our principal. We love our job, and we show up for one another. We support one another. Go ahead. You know, we have teachers that inspire, we celebrate coworkers, we laugh together. We have teachers that they provide their students with fun things, like on Valentine's Day. She decorates their room, everybody gets a balloon. That's something above and beyond. Again, you know, we had one teacher was in a kickball league, and people showed up in the summer. We laugh together, we choose positivity, to be positive over negative. There's one saying that I like to make sure we don't hear a lot is it's not my job. It is everybody's job in this building to be positive. It's everybody's job in this building to make sure our school is safe, that our school is clean, that our coworkers are okay. So what we found is that when we build a positive culture, which I believe we are doing, we have a happy staff. And a happy staff makes for happy students. If a teacher's coming in and they're having a bad day and they're crabby, that's probably not gonna transcend very well down to the students. So we try very hard to build one another up. And we have found that our attendance rate is rising. Why? Not really sure, but I can tell you that on Friday mornings, we have dance parties outside, and now we're inside. And we have kids running out of their cars. We have parents stopping and taking pictures. They love it. The teachers love it. I mean, we're all dancing, and it's a fun way to start the school. Our passing i-read scores have risen. Again, it's not by luck, it's because nobody, I also have another saying is if you're leaning, you're cleaning. And what that means is there's no downtime. We don't have downtime, we don't have time to sit. We have to find every minute to take a student in need. And you know, Ms. Patton will be out in the hallway with little kids on the floor working. Our art person, she's not upstairs just doing art, she's in the kindergarten wing helping. So it's the culture of helping one another. Our office and discipline referrals are down significantly. There are times that in the office, I'm like, it's kind of slow, which is a good thing, but it's not, it's not always usual. So it's kind of different. And one of the things I'm most proud of is we have retained the same teaching staff for the past four years. We have not replaced one teacher. We've hired, but we haven't replaced. To me, that says people want to work here. Why? Because I hope they know we value them, we care about them, we want them here, and that we are a team. And it's not my job, it's not an option.
Thank you. As I was telling Dr. Stevens as we were talking before the meeting started, it's hard to believe this is year thirteen for me at Emmons that, you know, I came here twelve years beforehand. But it's been a wonderful place, and I hope to spend thirteen more years here. But as Mrs. Lewinsky said, it's all about culture, it's all about staff, it's all about transcending that to our students. You know, we work hard every day, we come in every day trying to do the absolute best we can for kids. And when we can do that with a smile on our face, when we can do that and inspire a student because we generally enjoy the people we work with, it's all that better. The kids feel it, you know, the staff feels it, and as a result, we see things go up. Not because it's a better program, not because it's this new piece of curriculum, those are all important. But when we can reach the students, when we can connect with them, when we can build those strong relationships, we're gonna be able to implement those things better. We're going to be able to get them to buy into what we're telling them more, and it's paying off, it's showing. Again, Mrs. Lewinsky talked about sometimes the office is slow. It's a wonderful thing. It's a wonderful thing. It's slow, I'm getting into more classrooms, I'm spending more time with teachers, I'm spending more time with students in the learning capacity rather than the behavior management capacity, and that's what it's really about. We've been super happy with the way this year has started. We're hoping for great things as we continue on. The staff is working hard, I'm so happy to see all of them here tonight supporting us, you know, giving up their free time to come and support the building that they love. But once again, we just want you guys to see a little bit of what's going on at Emmons. And really, that last sentence on our presentations is it all, you know, the kids here, we love them, we nurture them, we discipline them when we need to, we teach them, and hopefully, at the end of the day, we've inspired them. I mean, that's the goal at the end of the day. And it shows, very seldom in education do you see the payoff sometimes, but you know, Mrs. Miller was a great example. She got one earlier this year that she did not expect at all, but came back and gave her that shirt before the homecoming game, and it was a wonderful experience. Because sometimes it's the ones that you don't think, you don't think of, you don't expect them that are, you know, paying the most attention. But again, we appreciate your time and letting us share with you tonight, and we are always open for questions, and our doors are always open for you to come visit us. Thank you.
Thank you, very well done, and thank you to the kiddos from the ground crew who showed up and led us in the pledge. Moving on to comments and questions from the floor. Four point zero one, representatives of Mishawaka Parent Group. Four point zero two, representatives of school employees. Four point zero three, representatives of Mishawaka Education Foundation, and we have Carrie Patton. Carrie, I have a question. Are you wearing flamingos tomorrow night?
I'm not. Good evening. I just have three quick little things. I told her, Jane, I'll come, but I want to get out of there. So number one, we are giving away about ninety-five hundred dollars in grants this year. So we just took care of that on a committee a couple weeks ago. The other thing is, we just filled two thousand dollars worth of wish list, so that's another great thing. So my staff, just know, you could be at the top of the list if you write one. And lastly, just don't forget tomorrow night, bid and auctions tomorrow, or the casino night, whatever, is tomorrow night. And that is five thirty, but the mill's at six thirty. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Four point zero four is general public, and we have Matt Dodd. If you'd like to come to the podium, please. We know your name. State your address, please.
What was that?
Tell us your address.
Address is sixteen ten Shelton Drive in Mishawaka. And I have to admit, I've not been to a school board meeting before, so I just want to make sure I'm in the right time spot here. Our son had an issue at the high school, a disciplinary issue, and we met with the vice, one of the assistant principals about it. We thought the application of the disciplinary policy was ridiculous and told him so, and he seemed to agree with us. And we asked what we should do next, and he said to bring it to the school board. So is this the right time for that?
Probably not.
Okay, so when is?
But you have, you can email.
Excuse me?
You can say whatever you want here, it's completely open, that's fine. Or you can email us, and we can set up a time to have a conversation.
We don't want to, I don't want to waste time. If this isn't the place for that, that's fine. He said, but he specifically mentioned this was the school board meeting.
Yeah, and you may, you may.
But, no, and I'm happy to send an email, that's fine. I just.
Let's set up some time.
Okay.
And do it between us and you. How about that?
That'll, that will work.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Okay. Now, if anybody is left that would like to go, they can go before we start, but I think all the kiddos left. Five is the consent agenda. Five point zero one, approval of the minutes of the October eighth, twenty twenty five meeting. It is recommended that the Board of School Trustees approve the minutes for the October eighth, twenty twenty five board meeting as presented. Five point zero two, approval of bill warrants and payroll. It is recommended that the Board of School Trustees approve the bill warrants and payroll in the amount of six million, five hundred ninety-five thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and thirty-two cents from the appropriate funds. Five point zero three, approval of the September bank statement reconciliation report. It is recommended that the Board of School Trustees approve the September bank statement reconciliation report as presented. Five point zero four, declaration of obsolete property. It is recommended that the Board of School Trustees declare the items listed as surplus and allow of their disposal. Five point zero five, approval of donations. It is recommended that the Board of School Trustees approve the donations as listed and presented. Five point zero six, approval of the overnight field trips. It is recommended that the Board of School Trustees approve the overnight field trips as listed and presented. Five point zero seven, approval of the position descriptions. It is recommended that the Board of School Trustees approve the position descriptions as presented. Five point zero eight, approval of the consent agenda. It is recommended that the Board of School Trustees approve the consent agenda. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Six is reports and discussion items, there is nothing. Seven is human resources. Seven point zero one is personnel report. Mr. Laban?
Thank you, President Parks. This evening, we're recommending the appointment of seven classified and six extra duty assignments. We also have just one retirement this evening that I'd like to acknowledge briefly, and that is the case of Mr. Carl Mike Fisher. Throughout his nearly three decades with School City Mishawaka, Mike has held a variety of roles. He began his career as a teacher at John Young and then later at Mishawaka High School. His commitment to education and dedication led him into administration, where he served in key roles both at the middle school and at the high school levels as well. Mike served as the principal at John Young Middle School for nine years, and most recently, served as an assistant principal at Mishawaka High School. Mike's impact on our community has been immeasurable, his leadership, mentorship, and support of our students and of our staff has certainly left a lasting legacy and impression, so we thank him for that. And on behalf of the board and the admin, we want to wish him much golf, much Notre Dame football, and a very clean garage. Thank you, you're welcome, Jen, and this next, in this next chapter. So happy to answer any questions, but if not, it's recommended the board approve the personal report dated November fifth, twenty five, as presented.
So moved. Second. So moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations to the retirees. Seven point zero two, recommendation to ratify the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six agreement with the Mishawaka Education Association. Mr. Laban?
Thank you, President Parks. Consistent with the requirements of Indiana law, School City Mishawaka engaged in negotiations with the Mishawaka Education Association. On a new agreement for the twenty five, twenty six school year, the parties have reached an agreement on all required salary benefits and related issues. The tentative agreement was posted on the School City of Mishawaka website on Friday, October third, and the corporation held a public meeting to discuss the TA on Wednesday, October eighth. The TA currently includes some of the following. New base teaching salary of forty-eight thousand dollars, that's an increase of five hundred from our current. And salary range of forty-eight thousand to just over eighty-one thousand dollars, that's an average of a one point zero eight percent increase from our current salary range. And then we also have included in there a five hundred dollar salary differential for the initial attainment of the early literacy endorsement as required by new Indiana code. So essentially, that specifies that anyone who is renewing their license after a certain date, who is teaching or providing literacy instruction through pre-K through grade five, be required to complete specialized training, and as a result of that completion of that training, each school corporation has been required to set a salary differential to acknowledge that additional effort, additional work, and then the inclusion of that on their teaching license when they go to renew the next time. In terms of health insurance, we have a nine percent increase to the premiums for both the employee and the employer. We have the introduction of an optional high deductible plan. And then again, we are transitioning from our current provider to Anthem, Blue Cross, and Blue Shield as both our provider and our third-party administrator effective January one, two thousand twenty six. Dental insurance, there's a zero percent increase to the premiums. However, we are making a transition from our current provider to MetLife Dental effective January one, twenty six. And then, of course, we've always had additional changes to our extracurricular activities schedule and some language changes were also mutually agreed upon. If approved, the new salary amounts will be retroactive back to August eleventh, two thousand twenty five, and those changes will be reflected on the December twelfth paycheck that's issued to staff accordingly. Before I make the final recommendation, I certainly need to take a minute to thank several individuals who were involved in this process. First and foremost, for our partners at Mishawaka Education Association, co-presidents, Mrs. Amy Foley and Mrs. Jackie Miller, as well as the members who are part of the bargaining team on behalf of MEA. We say it a lot, and I can appreciate that, but I don't say it often to diminish the value that we find in our partnership with MEA. Not every corporation has that, right? And as we look at current realities and future realities, those conversations are going to become tough. And the value of that partnership is going to grow immensely, and so we really are grateful and appreciative for those folks and the way that they come to tough conversations with an open mind. And we always seek to provide solutions and outcomes that are to the benefit of everybody involved. I also need to acknowledge and want to recognize Mrs. Rachel Dutoy, Director of Business Services, for her work leading up to and throughout the process, as well as board member, Mr. Bill Pemberton, Mrs. Tracy Bolin, Mrs. Stephanie Bell, Mrs. Darlene Cochran, and Mr. Ben Demongus, who served on the committee or worked behind the scenes on behalf of the corporation as well. As always, happy to answer any questions, but if not, it's recommended the board ratify the twenty five, twenty six collective bargaining agreement with the MEA as presented.
So moved. Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Seven point zero three, approval of the revised twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six SEM employee handbook and amended appendix for B and C. Mr. Laban?
Thank you, President Parks. The administration recommends approval of the revised two thousand twenty five, two thousand twenty six SEM employee handbook, including the amended dependencies B and C, which include modifications to the educational, athletic, and operational pay schedules. This is specifically regarding our classified employees and their pay rates. Overall, most eligible classified personnel will see an increase of one point zero eight percent. If approved, those new hourly wages will go into effect beginning November sixteenth, two thousand twenty five. And those changes to those hourly wages will first be reflected again on that paycheck that's distributed to those employees as of December twelfth, two thousand twenty five. At this time, it's recommended that the board approve the revised twenty five, twenty six handbook and amended dependencies B and C.
So moved. Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Seven point zero four, approval of the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six administrator salary ranges. Mr. Laban?
Thank you, President Parks. This evening, the admin is recommending the approval of the administrator salary ranges for two thousand twenty five, twenty six. Board, on the packet or the handout that you have in particular, you have a two-pager. Any modifications to the counts or to the ranges is reflected on the first, and then there's a clean version that's also publicly accessible as well on the second page there. Some of those changes include, in terms of certified personnel with administrator addendums, the overall number of certified personnel with an administrator addendum has increased from thirty to thirty-two. This is reflective of the Director of Athletics being a certified administrator, where historically, that position has been classified as a classified administrator, so that's one of the changes. The other is reflective of the increase in the change to adding a principal to our virtual program, CAVE, as the result of the increase in enrollment. And that happened after we approved this document last school year, so that's why we're now just seeing that in here at this time. In terms of classified personnel with administrator addendums, the overall number of individuals has decreased by five, from thirty-seven to thirty-two. This is reflective of two less directors, one again being that Director of Athletics who has flipped from being classified to certified, so there's your one. And then the other is the elimination of the Director of Marketing and Development position. We also see captured in this change the consolidation of several other district-level positions that are housed at the administration center. This is our purchasing and print shop specialist, the administrative assistant to the superintendent and Board of School Trustees, and the administrative assistant- and the Administrative Assistant for Curriculum and Instruction. So again, that's where you see that, um, reduction, um, of five there. Overall, through strategic thinking, succession planning, and the efforts of many people, um, we have a net decrease of three administrators this year. However, you'll see captured on that document, because I think it's relevant, um, that last year we had a net decrease of four, so over the past two years, we have seven less individuals, uh, positions at the administration, uh, serving the district capacity of things. Um, so again, that, that has not been easy, um, and that has been done very intentionally and very strategically. Um, but we have managed, uh, and all of the, uh, folks who are still there are working incredibly hard and, and contributing in, uh, positive, meaningful ways, and we're appreciative of the ways in which they've stepped up to cover some of those, those positions that we have been able to absorb. In terms of salary increases, most eligible personnel with, um, administrator addendums or agreements will again receive a one point zero eight percent increase. Um, again, to be clear, that's the minimum amount that any other member or any other staff member of the bargaining unit or classified employee received. Um, simply for note of good measure, we are looking at our cell phone stipends and the reimbursement and handling that a little bit differently than what we have in the past. Um, but moving forward, this fixed cost will be a condition of employment, and that will be included in employees' annual-based salaries. If approved this evening, the new salary amounts will be retroactive to July one, twenty-five, and again, will be reflected on the December twelfth, twenty twenty-five paycheck accordingly. As always, happy to answer any questions, but at, at this time, it's recommended the Board approve the twenty-five, twenty-six admin ranges as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eight is curriculum instruction and technology. Eight point zero one is junior achievement. Dr. Stockstill.
Thank you. Good evening, President Parks, Dr. Stevens, and members of the Board. I'm here to share an impact report from Junior Achievement in our schools from last school year. No role. Junior Achievement is one of our many community partners. They believe in the boundless potential of young people and strive to prepare them to build thriving communities. Through generous sponsorship by the Michoacan Education Foundation, Junior Achievement partners with our schools to provide interactive, hands-on lessons about community, career, and financial literacy. In some classes, even a community member comes in to teach alongside the teacher. The following chart shows their impact and their reach at six of our buildings across the district, so you'll see the school, the grade levels, the number of classes, and students. This shows, uh, the remaining three schools and the impact at these schools as well. What you're, notice when you're looking at these charts, you'll also see attendance to BizTown. BizTown combines in-class learning with a day-long visit at a simulated town. To help you understand more what that looks like and the impact it has on students, sixth-grade teacher from Emmons, Mr. Rich Bittner, is going to share more about this experience from the lens of a, the teacher and to let you know what it looks like for our students.
Hello, I've, I've never done this at the school board, so I'm a little nervous. Um, and last year was my first time doing it, so I guess you get a different perspective on that, if not a long-term thing. Uh, I was overwhelmed by how it went, um, just watching the kids get in there. There are so many times we do some educational process and we're like, oh, you know, this will help you in the real world, but the real world is still just me telling them about the real world. And when you go into BizTown, they assign them, we have the jobs pre-assigned, they open up these envelopes, and within about fifteen minutes, they kind of ring a bell and the business day starts. Kids have specific roles they need to fulfill, uh, they're tracked electronically through iPads. They tell them at the end of the day if they made a profit, if they remember to pay off their loans, and all of that is done purely interactive. The adults are mainly there just to kind of oversee, but last year, we were short on volunteers and some of our businesses had no adult in them at all, and the director, um, could not believe that this is our first time, she couldn't believe how well they handled it, and one of our businesses that ran completely adult-free got what she was, what I was told, and I'm, I'm gonna believe, was a very rare award that she gave to somebody, because they actually had completed all their requirements before the end-of-the-day bell. Um, I'm really excited to go back this year. Um, I just, as far as JA, I've had it throughout my teaching career, and I believe even all the way back when I was in high school, but this as a culmination, after they've worked on it, K to six, is just a perfect way to wrap that up and then send them on to John Young. It's just a, it just highlights everything that is involved in that, the stress of something not going right, a kid who's supposed to have a job not showing up on the day. It is a very, very realistic way of what the real world entails, so. I mean, if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer it, but that's really like, for my one time, that's kind of how I just want to sum it up. We're going this year on December eleventh, and, you know, I'm doing a lot better this year with the curriculum, because I have a idea of what the end game looks like.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bittner. Moving forward, we want to ensure this type of experience for all our students. So led by Mrs. Julie Facette, our amazing K to twelve career coach, we're ensuring this opportunity for the students this school year at all, um, participation in these programs across the board at our schools. So ensuring that they have the curriculum K five, and then they have that BizTown experience to end. And it's truly led by Emmons, and I think it's a great example for us to be at Emmons Board Meeting tonight, is because Emmons has done a fantastic job over the years in their implementation, and we appreciate everything the teachers and their leadership are doing to make sure that this program's successful here as well. Um, also, as we move forward, we are going to make sure that this aligns with the Department of Edge College and Career Navigation requirements that they are giving to schools, as well as we're expanding and adding Junior Achievement Job Spark to our ninth grade as an experience. This is a program that is supposed to spark their interest in careers and get them excited for their future. Thank you for your time this evening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions and open the floor for any comments.
Well, thanks for the update. Eight point zero two, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six transfer of students for second semester, Mr. Troyer.
Thank you, President Parks, Dr. Stevens, members of the Board. Um, tonight, we are seeking approval for some dates and some available spaces for second semester out-of-district enrollment. So you will see the, uh, slideshow in front of you, uh, you are familiar with this slideshow, you see it every spring, you see it some falls. So, uh, we're gonna open up the enrollment process for out-of-district, uh, students for second semester. So tonight, what are we required to do? We are required to, uh, identify the number of spaces we are able to accept, and also some dates that we also have to post, not only on our, uh, school website, but also, uh, with the DOE. Um, so again, you've seen this slide before, so we will plan on doing that. So as far as establishing the, the dates, that will be our first task. First date is November fifth, that's when we're seeking approval, that's tonight. Uh, if approved by tomorrow, uh, we will have them posted on, uh, the website and the DOE. And then we will open up, uh, out-of-district enrollment from November sixth to January sixteenth. Um, and by January twenty-seventh, that is our hopeful date, that all parents will be notified digitally that they've been accepted or they've been denied. Uh, next slide. Here's the target enrollment numbers that we are going to shoot for. For second semester, it's basically ten spaces in every grade level except for twelfth. We traditionally, uh, don't accept twelfth graders out-of-district enrollments, um, and also reserving, uh, a twenty-five, twenty-five spaces for the CAVE. Next slide. Uh, we will continue to use SchoolMent software for one more round, so, uh, we're actually ending that contract, uh, December seventeenth, I think. Um, not after complaints or anything of that nature, uh, SchoolMent has been fine, it's worked great for whoever's, except, whoever's managing that, uh, whether it be Miranda Shiko or Heidi Peebles now. Um, but we, uh, Mrs. Peebles and I have been working with Mr. Bodlin and the Technology Department, and the Technology Department is confident that we'll be able to set this up in Skyward. So end result of that would be, uh, you know, as of next semester, next spring, we'll be using a little different method, but it will be within Skyward, so that will be a cost savings of approximately twelve thousand dollars a year. So, uh, I'm excited about that, and I appreciate the Technology Department and, and working with Mrs. Peebles and I and trying to get that set up. Um, so other than that, those are the numbers, uh, those are the dates that we're seeking approval for.
All right, is there a motion?
I, I do, I do have a question for, on the, uh, ten per grade level, how are they determined which school they go to, elementary-wise or whatever? You look at the numbers, I'm sure, class sizes and everything, okay?
Generally, in the application process, uh, parents will list a few choices, two or three choices, exactly, Mr. Redberry. It's usually two or three choices.
Okay.
And then we take that into consideration, and then we check class lists and, and who has room, and, you know, if, if a grade level's closed, we ju, we just let them know.
Right.
You know, we have to look at second or third choice.
Okay, thank you.
So it was motioned?
Motion.
Yeah. Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Eight point zero three, request permission to advertise for the E-Rate Category One bid, Dr. Stevens.
Thank you, President Parks. As I mentioned earlier, I'm pinch-hitting for Mr. Bodlin tonight, so if I mess this up, I apologize in advance. The School and Library Service Support Program, commonly known as E-Rate, is essential for funding the district's connectivity. This Category One funding allows us to obtain affordable telecommunications and high-speed internet access for all of our schools. Existing contracts for internet and wide-area network service expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six for our schools. To ensure the continuity of service and secure the ninety percent E-Rate reimbursement, it's recommended to open the rebidding process. This new bid will also allow us to take advantage of potential cost savings and meet our district's evolving needs, specifically by including the warehouse that we purchased a few years ago, and planning for the relocation of connectivity at Humms Elementary School, the new Humms Elementary School, uh, scheduled to be completed in August of twenty twenty-seven, hopefully before August of twenty twenty-seven. Uh, so with that thought in mind, I'm happy to entertain questions the Board may have pertaining to this E-Rate bid process, but if not, we're looking for your approval on this item.
Bill has a question.
Of course he has a question, you're gonna, oh, goodness gracious. All right, Mr. Pemberton, what do you have?
Who's the present provider?
I believe our present provider is MapleNet. Does that sound right to any of my technology friends back there? I'm gonna go with MapleNet.
Surf internet.
Surf?
Oh, surf.
Oh, you think it's surf? Yeah. Well, you may very well stump the superintendent, so congratulations if I am incorrect on that.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nine is Business and Operations. Nine point zero one, approval of service agreement with JPR Architects, Mr. Caleb Beck.
Good evening, President Parks, Board Members, Dr. Stevens. I'm here tonight, uh, to, uh, ask for, uh, approval to go in agreement with, uh, JPR Architects. Um, a little background, um, Food Services and Operations have been, uh, looking at some options here at this school, Emmons, uh, to, um, fix some of the, the issues that we see with the cafeteria and the kitchen. It's, uh, a very small area, both of those areas are very small. Uh, to be efficient, it's, it's pretty tough. I know they've added some lunch periods, uh, to try to accommodate. Uh, they also, uh, sometimes use the stage, things like that, uh, move some, some of the kids out here. So, uh, a while back, Food Services have, uh, contacted some people that they work with, uh, trying to get some numbers on some areas. This kind of started in that, uh, vacant area where the museum was at. Uh, some of the numbers were, uh, pretty high, so, uh, we've been talking, so I've been meeting with some contractors along with, uh, um, Food Services, and, uh, trying to get some ideas, and, uh, what, what would be better? Uh, trying to use that space, uh, use the space they have already, uh, maybe add on, I know that was a little question earlier. Um, it does appear that maybe adding on, uh, is actually gonna be cheaper than trying to move, uh, the kitchen. Some of those, uh, are kind of obvious, uh, the utilities, you know, the gas, water, things like that, to move that into a place where it's not now, it's gonna be quite costly. So anyway, we've had, uh, several contractors out, kind of give us some ideas, uh, we've been telling them kind of what we're, what we're thinking, and, uh, the next step, I've actually had the architect, um, out already looking at, uh, the area. We've talked a couple different times, uh, along with some contractors with him as well, to make sure he kind of really understood what we're looking for. So, tonight, uh, if, if, uh, you can approve, we're, we're going to have them put a conceptual, um, uh, of the, the location together, so we can kind of dive down and get some true numbers of what this may cost. Uh, they can easily walk in here and tell us some numbers now, but we really have to put it on paper and then have some, they'll, they'll go out and try to price this and see what it's gonna cost, so we can get an idea. Uh, to, to get, uh, the agreement, uh, to work with them, uh, the number I, I don't have it front of me, but I'm pretty sure it's just under thirteen thousand dollars, um, twelve thousand and some, uh, for them to put this together for us.
Okay.
And what's the timeframe on the process of getting the project back to you? Is it a month?
Well, uh, he'll, he'll do it as, uh, um, as quick as he can, but it's probably still going to be, um, probably three months, I'm gonna guess.
Mr. Addison would have liked to have seen this done probably three years ago, no, thirteen years ago, when he started here.
Along with the paint of the salmon.
The other thing, some of the things we've already talked about too, as well, is some of this we can do while school's still going on.
Okay.
If, if we do choose to add on, the thoughts would be, um, pushing out towards the front, towards the street there. That work would be all done while they can still run schools normal. And then, in the summertime, when, when there's a break, hopefully they would have all that area done. That's when they would come in through the walls, uh, and expand. Some of the things we're, just to give you an idea, some of the things we're thinking about is, uh, there's two walls in the kitchen, uh, one that separates the kitchen from the serving line, and then the serving line from the cafeteria. Uh, taking on the big one, uh, moving the kitchen, making it larger, and then moving the serving line out into the current cafeteria, and then, uh, still using some of that area for cafeteria, but then the addition, adding it on, making it, making it larger. Also with some new, um, safety things that would happen, um, with the hoods, things like that, to give her more options for, uh, cooking and serving. Uh, right now, there's some things, we don't even use a, a stove in, in there right now because of, uh, the, it's not up to code to, to do that. So we would try to bring everything back up to code and, um, just make it more efficient.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our fingers are crossed. All good things. Um, nine point zero two, contract with Inventory ID, Dr. Stevens.
Thank you, President Parks. Tonight, we're seeking approval of a contract with Inventory ID. This was formerly known as Asset Management for services to be provided, uh, starting in June of two thousand twenty-six. This proposal covers a corporation-wide asset inventory process, which is a process required by the auditors every two years to ensure accurate tracking and reporting of district assets. Uh, as you may recall, it was probably two audits ago, uh, it wasn't a finding, but I think it was a comment, uh, about our, uh, inventory at that time, which is why then we got into this process to try to, uh, make sure that we are in compliance, uh, with future audits. So I'm happy to entertain additional questions the Board may have, but if not, we're seeking your approval, uh, as presented.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's removed and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Nine point zero three, property and casualty broker request for proposal, Dr. Stevens.
Thank you, President Parks. School City, Michoacan intends to examine current and potential, uh, new brokerage options to provide property and casualty insurance coverage for the school corporation. This RFP aims to collect information from various agencies, so that the administration may be able to select groups to interview, and ultimately, present a broker for formal board approval in the future. Uh, again, special thanks to Mr. Greg Hicksonball, who helped us put together, uh, this RFP. Um, but, uh, if, happy to entertain questions the Board may have on the RFP. If there are none, we are seeking approval of this item as presented.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second. It's removed and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Motion carries. Ten is Policy Updates, 10.01, Second Reading of the Approval of Policies, Mr. Troyer?
Thank you, President Parks. Tonight, we're seeking approval of the Policy Updates that have already been approved in the prior reading. Volume 36. The proposed policy updates presented tonight are part of Neola's Volume 36, Number One, Update from March 2024. This update includes fifteen revised policies, two newly proposed policies, one technical correction, eleven policies recommended for rescission. These changes are part of Neola's ongoing efforts to ensure policy alignment with the current state and federal laws, court decisions, and Office of Civil Rights Guidance, and best practices around or across Indiana's school districts. It is recommended that the Board of School Trustees approve the policies from Volume 36, Number One, March 2024, as presented.
Move for approval.
Second.
So moved in second, and all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 10.02, First Reading of Policies, Mr. Troyer?
Thank you. The proposed policy updates presented tonight are part of Neola's Volume 36, Number Two, Update from September 2024. This update includes seven revised policies, two technical corrections, one policy recommendation for rescission. Highlights of key changes, policies 1617, 3217, 4217, 5772, and 7217. Deal with weapons, all of these policies have been revised to accommodate the provisions of House Enrolled Act 1177, and make clear the possession of firearms or weapons by visitors is prohibited except for the possession of a firearm who legally may carry, legally may possess a firearm, and has been authorized by the board to carry a firearm in or on the corporation property. Policy 1230, Responsibilities of the Superintendent, Indiana Code 2026, 5-423, requires the superintendent to notify the board of any knowledge of possible criminal activity of a current or former employee, and Indiana Code 20-26-5-44, requires the superintendent to notify the board of legal expenses reasonably expected to exceed the amount specified by the board. Policy 5136.01, Technology Resources and Other Electronic Equipment. In light of the changes to Board Policy 5136, in a special update, this policy has been revised to distinguish corporation-issued tech from student-owned tech other than Onto Volume 36, Number Two, The Proposed Policy Updates Presented Tonight are part of Neola, Volume 36, Number Two, Edgar Ugg, Update from September 2024. This update includes nine revised policies. Highlights of the key changes, the Office of Management and Budget revised several parts of the OMB Guidance for Grants and Agreements, now called the OMB Guidance for Federal Financial Assistance, located in Title II of the Code of Federal Regulations, CFR. When the Office of Management and Budget, OMB, officially released revisions to uniform, to the uniform guidance of all federal agencies, including the Department of Education, were to ensure the 2024 revisions were effective for all federal awards issued on our, after October 1, 2024. OMB's revisions are intended to improve the federal financial assistance management and transparency and oversight through more accessible and easily understandable guidance. Additionally, additional proposed policy changes, School City Mishawaka's Choice, Policy 8510, Wellness. This policy has been revised to provide clearer guidance on regarding food sales during school meal periods. Specifically, it carries, clarifies that only Food Services Department is authorized to sell food during breakfast and lunch. Additionally, the policy now includes updated language encouraging the inclusion of healthy food options at school celebrations and gatherings. Next steps, these policies are presented tonight for our first reading, no board action will be taken at this meeting, final versions will be brought forward for approval at the December 3 board meeting.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Eleven is Superintendent's Report and Action Items, 11.01, State Tuition Support Information, Dr. Stevens?
Thank you, President Parks. As we talked a little bit earlier in the, sort of the pre-meeting, individuals in the general public may not know, but the Indiana Department of Education has specific financial thresholds for school corporations. Tonight, I'm providing the board and general public notice that School City Mishawaka has been notified that we are non-compliant with our teacher compensation. The notice states that School City Mishawaka does not meet the 62% threshold, that's 62% of education dollars, and states that we are actually at 61.91%. With this percentage mandate, have been a variety of changes through the years, what has been permitted to count or not to count when submitting the Form 9 this year, which is the information that the DOE uses. We did not submit costs related to substitute teachers, which resulted in the error. We have requested an appeal based on that information, but have been denied, for lack of a better phrase. So in any event, the Indiana Department of Education is correct that the information we submitted does indeed put us below the 62% threshold. However, if we were granted an opportunity to appeal that, and certainly me telling you this tonight is to notify you that the substitute teacher parameters that are allowable puts us well above the 62%. So there is no vote the board has to take on this particular item, but I have to make sure I report it to you and report it to the public, then it gets posted on our website for individuals to see, and we will continue to work through this, because next year, that percentage actually goes up to 65% of education fund dollars needs to go to teacher compensation. So that bar will be moved a little bit again, but I'm confident that we'll get over that next school year as well. So happy to entertain questions the board may have on that, but again, there's no action on it necessarily. Very good. Next, as we wrap up for Superintendent's Report, special thank you to Mr. Addison and any of the Emmens staff that are left, and it looks like they all got out of Dodge, which is absolutely fine, and his students for hosting our meeting tonight. As always, a special thank you to the Mishawaka Network and the School City Mishawaka Technology Crew for helping us put on the roadshow, even though the roadshow's sort of right across the way from the normal administrative center. And last but not least, Veterans Day, next week, a number of our schools will be hosting Veterans Day convocations. I think, actually LaSalle may squeak one in here this Friday, which is absolutely fine. So simply a special thank you, first to our veterans, and then of course, to our staff and our students, who really go out of their way to make sure that the veterans feel special and feel thanked for the service that they provided to our country. And so with that, happy to entertain additional questions the board may have, but if there are none, President Parks, I turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Twelve is Communications, 12.01, Public Announcements. Reminder to Four Families, November 26, 2025 is an e-learning day. Schools will be closed November 27 through the 28, 2025 for Thanksgiving break. The next meeting of the School City of Mishawaka's Board of School Trustees is December 3, 2025, at the Ad Center. If there is nothing else to come before the board, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. I'm gonna have Mr. Doc. I did that before I let them go.